It makes no difference if it's late or much. Just keep that rhythm to everything you got. It don't mean a thing if it ain't got that swing.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Tuesday, December 4th Board of Selectmen meeting. I'll go over the agenda briefly. At 7 o'clock, we have Citizens' input. At 7:05, we have a Chairman's update. At 7:15, our Town Planner Sharon Wasson and Michael Johns are going to be discussing the Crossroads Veteran Service District Grant for Foxborough. At 7:25, our Town Manager Kevin Pecos will be discussing an appointment of Paul Duma as the alternate to the Board of Directors of the Crossroads Veteran Service District. At 7:30, we'll be looking at the alcohol license renewal affidavits. At 7:40, the year-end insurance loss program will be discussed. At 7:55, we're going to go over the fiscal year '14 budget goals. And at 8:15, we're going to go into executive session for non-union personnel negotiations. So, Mark, do you want to lead us in the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I forgot to mention, we also have a bunch of action items to follow the agenda items as well. Under Citizens' input, is there anybody that would like to speak? I've seen nobody. Chairman's update, I wanted to talk to you about a topic that is probably one of the -- well, is probably one of the most important ones that I've had to deal with since I've been a Selectman. Several weeks ago, I started getting phone calls and requests to put something on the Selectmen's agenda to deal with this child sexual abuse issue that's going through Foxborough right now, specifically Sheen in the investigation. And the request is, should it go on the Board of Selectmen's table as an agenda item so we can deal with it? I was somewhat quiet because I didn't have the details. And then yesterday, it got more of a request and started coming in from state newspapers. So, I kind of wanted to explain how I feel, what the Selectmen's role is on this whole thing. Initially, and first and foremost, investigators and the attorneys are working on this. And they started, and rightfully so, without the input of the Board of Selectmen. It has nothing to do with us, and we're not investigators. So, that process is going under the criminal process. The Board of Selectmen have jurisdiction over the police, and we do provide guidance to our Town Manager to deal with litigation, both against and from the town. Right now, it's not in anybody's best interest for the Selectmen to talk about the details, even if we had it. It's an ongoing investigation, and that process will work its way through. One thing I was starting to get aware of, and I'm hearing from people, that because it wasn't being talked about, there may be a perception that it's intentionally being quieted or swept under the rug. I wanted to make one thing clear, that absolutely clear, that I will make it a priority for this board, whatever's under our jurisdiction, to go towards the truth and to go in any direction that we need to go to get to the truth. In general, I've spoken with Superintendent Deb Spinelli, and I've spoken to our Chief, Ed O'Leary. I've spoken a little bit to our Town Manager, our Recreation Department, our Town Council. And specifically from our Superintendent and our Police Chief, they are turning over whatever rock and whatever file cabinet they need to do to get to the truth. And the reason they need the truth is to help, one, help the victims that have been affected. They were our residents, and many of them still live here. And, two, so it doesn't happen again to the kids that are here today. If somebody wants to reach out, you're certainly welcome to reach out to the Selectmen. But I would first suggest go strictly to the police. Chief O'Leary suggested going to our Police Officer, Tim O'Leary, who's dealing directly with this. He's very in tune to the Florida issue and to helping the victims here. Secondly, the YMCA is working with the town to present and educate the public in the prevention of sexual abuse of children. They've had one, and I think they have one Thursday night at the Hearn School. So, if you're interested, if you want to come and listen or participate, please reach out to the YMCA, and they can sign you up and give you the details. I do want to read, I put a statement together, and this is a statement that I gave to the press today, and mostly because I was afraid that if we were quiet, it would be under the -- people would get the wrong perception. So, what I told the press today is, I see absolutely no benefit whatsoever in putting up roadblocks in determining what happened back then to our kids. Victims simply did not get the respect they deserved during those days, and I will do everything that I can as a Selectman to make sure that it does not happen to them again as adults by covering up anything or being less than completely helpful. If our community failed a child back then, the worst thing that we can do now is not to address it openly, to get the questions answered. This is somewhat early in the process, and I know few details. However, if the flag that the Selectmen have to wave high says, "If you are predator in our community, we will make it as difficult and as miserable as possible for you to exist here or anywhere," then that is what I want to do. Step one starts with getting to the truth, and there's no other way, in my opinion. I am confident that our town and our leaders will do the right thing, and there's nothing I've seen so far in the contrary to that notion. So, I hope it's very clear that the town is in front of this. We will continue to be in front of it as much as we can. And, please, if there's anything that you know or you want to get involved, just go to the police, and they can pick it up from there. Thank you. So, we're a few minutes early on the -- Sharon? Not here yet.
I don't think she's coming tonight.
Does someone want to talk about the --
Mike Johns is here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't say that, Mike. There you go.
She's not able to be here, but I was one of the ones that worked on this with her.
Mike must be going undercover because he's got the beard going.
That's why I didn't recognize him.
Hunting season, I was a little worried for him, but...
This is the really, really ugly Sharon.
Go ahead, Mike. If you want to just introduce yourself to the people that might not know you.
Sure. Mike Johns, Deputy Director of the Crossroads Veteran Services District. Last year, we put in for a grant to get this district started with some facilities, some communication, computers, et cetera. Foxborough took the lead on doing the actual formation documents. Another town took the lead on doing the innovation grant. We didn't get it. So, this year, it was Foxborough's turn to take the lead on getting the grant, so we're going to get it. It's about $191,000 if it's managed well. It's renewable for a second year, and it's called Community Innovation Challenge Grant. And it is technology-based through the state, and it is looking for innovative services through regionalization or district. So, we fall right in there. The stuff we're asking for was going to help the three VSOs serving the four communities to communicate through telephone services that are going to be on the go. So, wherever we are in the district, we're going to be able to provide services. Also, connected computer services, then it could be on the fly with cloud storage and memory that we all share. So, three VSOs, four communities, all connected, and that's what this grant's about, to move us forward to that next step. And I think we're in a good position to apply for this. The four district board members have all signed. They've given their nod and signed this. But the state has said that even though this is a four-town district, they want one town to take the lead and a Board of Selectmen to sign it. So, that's what this step is.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions from the board, comments?
We did a fantastic job on this.
This is Sharon's work.
Sharon did a great job. Once again, I mean, she's great at writing the grants. The only thing that I'm afraid of is, you probably got the email today, is the Governor's asking for budget cuts. And just before I got here tonight, I got another email that, you know, it's specifically mentioning veteran services as well as regionalization, things going for grants for those things. So, maybe, you know, if we can reach out to our legislators to say, you know, "Don't let him do this. Don't let him cut this," you know, the things that he's looking to cut, you know? So, but I support it absolutely. I'm just, you know, a little nervous. Timing is everything, and that's what happens sometimes, but...
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to one comment about that. The state, and specifically Department of Veteran Services, has given the nod to appropriately form veteran services districts if they're approved through the state. And the structure that has been laid out for this particular district with four towns, with town halls, all within about 12 miles of each other, I mean, we're geographically we're set up in a good position. We've got three strong VSOs. I think we're at least the structure, not so much the efficiency and workings as of yet, but the structures laid out so far is starting to be used as a model. So, if you're reaching out to legislators, you know, I think that's something to keep in mind, that they're touting that this is it. And what's going to make this work is that we have some connectivity computer-wise and phone-wise, and that's a lot of what this is about.
And if, you know, if they hadn't mentioned, you know, cutting some grants for regionalization projects, you know, I wouldn't have even mentioned it, but they did, so...
Jenny?
When I was reading through it, this is for basically one-time costs for things. It's great. The $191,000, is it like for one time?
It's mostly one-time costs. The one thing you'll see is some support services, but the one-time costs are the setting up, like I said, the computers, the cloud storage. There is also some project management, because right now, we are absolutely deluged in work. We're buried. So, to get this going, part of that grant asks for a project manager. That's a one-time, that'll go away after we're in motion, things like that. Most of it is one-time. There's a little bit of ongoing. And as I said, if we get this and it's managed correctly on a month-to-month basis, this pays out ahead of. So, to start off, we get a month's or a quarter's pay, and then we prove that we've managed it well, and then we move into next quarter and so forth. If we manage that well through the first year, it is a renewable grant. But mostly one-time, yes, not entirely.
Yeah, okay. Just reading through this and seeing the improvement in services that have come about as a result of the consolidation or the regionalization efforts to date is very impressive. And, you know, barring cuts, I think this is a great, great application and really would stand out. So, thanks for the work on it. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. And again, the credit goes to Sharon.
Look forward to signing it. Thank you very much.
Thanks to Sharon and you, and also Heath Hobson is this assistant?
Heath had a big hand in this, as did Bob Siteman, who's still in recovery.
Yep. Perfect. Very good, very positive. Pleasure of the board.
So, motion to endorse the application for the Community Innovation Challenge Grant for the Crossroads Veteran Services.
Motion made, seconded.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, John, I appreciate it.
Is there a -- before you leave, is there a -- I couldn't find a signature page in here for the board. Is there one there?
Yeah, I couldn't find it.
No, it's just the...
In the action folder?
This has, yeah.
I'll go get your signature page and bring it right back. I thought that was going to be included.
Is there a signature folder, Jim?
No.
There's a folder on it.
Yeah, I thought one of them was supposed to have a signature page. There it is. Is it page nine?
Well, that's what I was going to suggest, because we're on a very tight timetable, so I was going to ask the board if you'd sign it.
I'll take it.
Yeah.
Beautiful. And we did actually already send this to the state.
There's three copies.
They have it because it was due the 30th. We've sent it, and they understand that it was going for vote and signature tonight. So, we have made the deadline.
We got one in the packet. Do we need to sign three?
No, there's not three here. There's just one.
Just one.
Just one.
Just going by Sandra. Do what she says.
I find that as a rule that's worthy of obeying.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
You doing the trees outside?
No. Not this year. Actually, I haven't done it in several years.
I was going to throw one on my car tonight, and then nobody's there.
That's the level...
Probably a good time to do it.
Yeah. Actually, that has been done.
Great, I know.
The level of my participation in that is to buy one. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hey, Mike, you may want to, Mike, you might want to just stay for a minute while we do this, case is a question I can't handle. Good, thanks.
And next on the agenda, we have an appointment of Paul Duma as an alternate for the Board of Directors of the Crossroads Veteran Service District. I assume Paul's not here, though, right?
No. As the boards are aware, our primary delegate has been a bit under the weather lately, and probably will have to need some assistance from an alternate. Now, we don't have any agreement. There really isn't a provision for that, but we checked with the other communities, and they understand the circumstances. So, Paul's appointment is basically effective only so long as is needed, until Bob is able to participate. We've got a board meeting coming up very soon, which is critically important, to get the agreement re-approved for submission to the state and the grant and all that. So, it's kind of critical to have participation. So, we met with Paul, briefed him in. He agreed to do this. He comes with Bob's blessing, as you know. And we're all waiting for Bob very eagerly to get back on his feet, but appreciate very much having Paul step in in the interim.
So, will he just be stepping in until January 13th? Or will this be a permanent...
I would say just appoint Paul the alternate in perpetuity. And then, I think what we're going to do is, in the new agreement, we're going to make an amendment so that there's a permanent provision to appoint alternates for all the towns.
Okay.
This is just, we didn't think of it when we were putting it together, that's all.
So, he'll be an alternate through May?
Right, and then it'll be an annual reappointment.
Okay. So, I move that we appoint Paul Dumas as an alternate to the Board of Directors to the Crossroads Veteran Services District?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. More discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. I didn't know his first name was Cyril.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. They're flying. Couple, a few minutes early, but you want to go over the alcohol license renewal, or you want to do some action items to catch up?
Let's just do that.
Go through it?
Yeah.
Kevin, you want to walk us through the...
Yeah, this is very simple. This is the annual affidavit signing that you're doing. Basically, what you're saying is that they have two documents in place, and basically you're verifying that so that that goes in ABCC, and they know these folks are legal and in compliance. Now, at the current time, there are two establishments that those records are not in for. Bar Luis has one document missing, and...
Waxie's.
Waxie's, thank you, has one. And there's one other, Sandy?
Antonius is not renewing.
They're not going to renew?
They're not going to renew. They're going to be moving, so their license will be reverting back to the board.
So, what we'd appreciate if you would do is to sign them all, because they're under a very short timeframe. When the two documents come in on Waxie's and Bar Luis', then we'll release those to the ABCC. We won't release them until the two documents come in.
What about, I see Piccadilly on here. They changed, is this still under their name?
We don't have approval back from the state on Jack and Joe's. So, I've spoken to the attorneys at the state. I spoke to the attorneys for Piccadilly, because there's a court order on that license. So, according to the state, because it hasn't actually transferred yet, it has to be renewed by the Piccadilly. They still own that, you know, they're still in possession of that license.
And the only other question I have is, I forget the name of the restaurant that just moved.
Asian Gin.
Yeah, they haven't got their state approval, yeah.
They have no license as of yet.
And they're not on this list?
You can't renew what you don't have.
Yeah, I was speaking to them, actually, two nights ago, and they were expecting it this week. Okay.
So, I move that we approve the 2013 alcohol license renewal affidavits as given us in our packets.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, and under discussion, which was given to us in our packets, but exclude...
Well, I think he said for us to, because of the time period, just to...
But we can't, in our packet, we've got Piccadilly, which we can't approve.
We have to renew.
We have to renew it.
Until the renew, the transfer comes in, and then it'll get taken care of.
I wasn't listening. Okay, motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carries 5-0. Now, Kevin, you will or will not present the year-end insurance loss program?
Well, here's what I had hoped to do. I gave you a copy of it. The Loss Control Committee did some great work last year. What I was hoping to do was write up a brief for you tonight and give you a little PowerPoint or something. Unfortunately, I had to choose between two projects, and the other one is the one that's going to be an executive session, so I couldn't get them both done. But you have the report, and suffice to say, what this committee does is, is basically all the department heads who have employees. What they do is they look at every insurance claim, workman's comp, property, casualty, and liability, and go through them and manage the claims, meaning, you know, get folks back to work as quick as we can, find out what caused an accident, do preventative things, organize training that our employees do. And we are extremely active in training. We probably, our employees are probably attending 30 or 40 classes a year. Now, not every employee goes. Some may go to chainsaw training, some may go to, you know, some other kind of training, but we've got a lot of stuff going on. And because of that, we've been extremely successful in reducing premium by, I think we brought in some 40-odd thousand dollars in premium credits this year through what's called the Meyer Rewards Program. We've also been very successful in reducing the claims experience in the various lines. And as you notice, the loss ratio on the back chart is the ratio of claims dollars paid out to paid premium that we pay the insurance company. So, for property casualty, you notice that in fiscal '08, it was 41. In fiscal '09, we had a bit of a train wreck of the year, 110. In fiscal '10, it was 10%, 11%, 10% in fiscal '12, 21%. So, those three years, '10, '10, and '21, are the most recent years that get used to calculate our premium. So, what we can expect is, in the area of property casualty, we should do very well with our premium next year, and in fact, probably get a substantial reduction. That is really an outstanding record. A 60%, 6-0% loss ratio is considered industry standard. So, a 10-21 is extraordinarily good. I'm not going to tell you that we'll continue with that level of success, because that really is really extraordinary. But if we can keep it, you know, under 25%, we're doing a really tremendous job. In the area of workers' comp, again, it's a pretty good record. '08, it was 44%. '09, it was 108%. I don't know what happened, but both, '09 seemed to have been a train wreck of the year in all lines of insurance for some reason. The fiscal '10, 23%. Now, that's the year we started the loss control program. 11-32% and 12-27%. Now, these are moving numbers, because as claims mature and dollars get paid out, ratios can go up or down. So, these are the ratios as of a moment in time, and that moment was as of June 30th of this year. In the area of workers' comp, good loss ratios are even more important, because they affect something called the Experience Modification Factor. And all that is, is the insurance industry has an expectation of what we're going to have for claims. So, we're a government. So, for a government entity, they have a profile of what we expect, and it's all done by actuaries. An Experience Modification Factor of 1.0 means you have a claims record of 60%. Since our claims record is much better, our MOD, as it's known, will be reduced. And what they do is they take the standard premium that we should pay, multiply it by the MOD. So, if the MOD is 1.0, we're doing average work, then we pay exactly what premium should be paid. But the MOD can go as low as .6 or as high as 1.5. So, if you're having poor claims, you can pay 50% more than what you should pay, or as much as 40% less than what you would be rated. Loss ratios of 23, 32, and 27 are going to result in a reduction in our MOD factor, and we're going to save a substantial amount of money in premium on July 1 of next year. So, that is the distilled version of this giant memo. And kudos to the people whose names you see on here. Superintendent of Schools, Bill Yuckna, Chief O'Leary, Chief Hatfield, Deputy Chief Bagley, Assistant Accountant Jody Cuneo, Vicki Lowe, COA Director, Health Director Pauline Clifford, DPW Director Roger Hill, Town Agent Bob Swanson, Library Director Jerry Cirillo, Sandy in our own office. And those are the people that sit on the committee and have done all this great work. So, I want the board to be aware of that, and probably more importantly, the public to be aware, but as well. It's unseen work. It's very quiet. Nobody ever sees those committee meetings. But they're doing a heck of a job, and so far, they are really hitting it out of the park. But you'd appreciate knowing all that. And hopefully, through the good offices of the press, they will highlight that and let the taxpayers know that there's a lot of good work going on on their behalf.
So the hundred twenty thousand dollars is the actual reduction as a result of that calculation and the good?
Yeah, that's the combination of all the different things we did that piled up to a pretty impressive savings. And that's the difference, think of it in terms of that's what we would have paid were it not for the combination of all these various things. That's early payment credits. That's the credits that we get for the, for the edu, for the training that we do with the employees, the loss control work. It's a combination of all those things. And a hundred and twenty grand is not a, not a bad record of accomplishment, that's for sure. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know it's a lot of technical stuff, but like I say, I just gave you the quick distilled version of it.
The year, the reason why 2009 was so bad, that was the year Jimmy got elected.
Oh, yeah. That did have a cataclysmic effect here. I forgot about that.
I'm not even going to comment on that. Kevin, there was one paragraph in here that says, however, in fiscal year twelve, net incurred losses jumped to seventy-five thousand, three hundred, yielding a loss ratio of twenty-one. While this is unfortunate, it must be viewed in context.
Yeah, that's two, that's two, the, about ninety percent of that is two claims. We had a broken ankle and a broken leg. And unfortunately, a broken leg occurred two days before the end of the fiscal year. And it involved a school teacher who was playing in a, you know how the schools at the end of the year have recreation activities involving the parents and the kids and all that? One of the teachers had an unfortunate accident and suffered a broken leg. That's a very, very expensive claim, obviously. And that was a big, big piece of this. The other was a DPW worker who stepped in a hole, rolled his ankle, and broke it. Now, we probably haven't had two fractures in ten years, and we had two in one year. So that is the context in which you look at this because absent those two very unusual accidents, and neither one involved either employee doing anything odd or unusual or in any way abnormal, but absent those two, we would have had a year in the single digits, the loss ratio. So we're hoping for a much better year. The insurance industry is a lot more interested in the total number of claims you have, known as frequency, than they are in the total dollars paid out, known as severity. So the reduction in claims that you saw in those charts, which is, we cut it by almost fifty percent, that is something that really affects that modification, experience modification factor far more. When they look at those big claims, you know, a single claim with a lot of dollars, it doesn't hurt you in the rating formula very much, but frequency hurts you a lot. The logic is one in every six claims is going to be a big one. And so if you're reducing claims, the logic is statistically, over time, you're going to have small losses, even though you might have one or two bad ones in a, in a freak year. So that's the real news. And you notice that comp claims in fiscal eleven were forty-two, and in fiscal twelve, we cut it exactly a little better than half, down to twenty. So that's the real big piece of news.
Then on the next page, it says, in fiscal year twelve, there were two claims filed, but no payments. And you already, we already have two claims filed for the fiscal year thirteen?
Where are you there, Jim?
Going to page three, halfway down. It says, in fiscal year twelve, there were two claims filed, but no payments made.
Yeah, the claims put in, but we don't have any indication yet as of the writing of this report. Remember, this is being written in October. So at that time, a couple of claims had gone in for fiscal twelve, but we didn't have any indication yet what they were going to pay. Those were liability claims? Yeah. One of those liability claims was in fact closed out with a zero. And the other one is, I have to look that one up to be sure, but I think that also was closed out as a zero. However, in thirteen, we've got the civil rights claim, which is a mega claim. So on the liability side, we'll see what happens on that claim, but that could be, that could end up as also a zero, or it could end up being a big blockbuster. We don't know yet.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Kevin, and thank you for everyone that worked on this. It was impressive. Okay, talk about our fiscal year fourteen budget goals.
Well, this is fairly simple. This was just to ask the board. I know last week I kind of asked you if there was any particular guidelines for the budget. I'm well into it at this point. The scheduled calls for it to be done in January, I'm hoping to, it's actually the end of January, I'm hoping to beat that again this year. The guidelines I've given out right now consist of no wage cola yet because you haven't voted anything. We'll do that later through Article Six. We have put some numbers in the forecast. I don't want to say publicly what those are because of the labor negotiation implications. We, on new employees, what I've said to the departments is I've targeted a few as the priority and said, put them in, we'll see what happens. Public safety, police is the number one. There's a couple of, number two is a laborer or two in the DPW. Number three would be some floating clerk in this building that would, you know, work in a number of places, and potentially some help in social services in the Council on Aging. Those are the four priorities. Other, oh, in the library. Now, I kind of got some conflicting information about the library, and I'm trying to sort that out. I assume logically, much bigger library, going to need new staff. I've been told there was a commitment made that indicated there wouldn't be no staff. So I'm kind of trying to piece all that together, and I haven't had a chance to sit with Jerry and the trustees yet to go over that. So that's kind of there, but may not be a problem. So those are, basically, those are the priorities. On the energy accounts, electricity is kind of fluctuating. We have a bid in place, but that bid only governs the cost of the electricity at the point of generation. It doesn't cover distribution, you know, as we send it cross-country and then send it around town, called distribution and transmission. Those charges fluctuate. And natural gas, I'm rebidding it right now, so I don't know how that's going to come out, but probably not so great because natural gas is starting to go up. Unfortunately, this happened to be our bid year. Go figure. So those are the only real instructions I've issued in terms of general guidelines. And if the board has any other thoughts, I'm, got plenty of time that you can tell me that, and I can use those thoughts to shape the budget. So, you know, it's not that you necessarily have to do anything, but I wanted to give you an opportunity if you did want to do anything.
Discussion on the board?
The library custodian, wasn't he a part-time, a half-time until?
Who?
The library custodian, wasn't it a part-time position?
Yeah. What happened this year, there's two, there's one and a half. And what happened this year is we cut some funding because they didn't need much custodial where they're in leased quarters right now. And what we wanted to be sure of was that we didn't reduce it. And then this year, when we put it back in, when they opened for the summer sometime, early fall, that it was seen as a big budget spike. So we wanted to be sure everybody understood, only going back to what we used to have. But there was a reduction for this year, yeah.
So that'll come back?
As I understand it, they are, yes.
The public safety positions, what are those?
Police. I am hoping, there's two or three initiatives that the chief and I are looking at. One is our ongoing discussions with the Craft Organization. Were that to yield a conclusion where the board was interested in proposing additional liquor licenses, there's a mitigation package which I've communicated to them would be needed, and that would involve police officers and potential, you know, for patrols at Patriot Place. There's the very strong possibility, I may propose a reorganization of the police department involving some restructuring of the officer corps. And that could have implication with some substantial savings which could translate into extra police officers, you know, trading management for, for troops. And there's a third initiative that we're kind of looking at that could also potentially result in having the resources to increase police officers. It's an enormous priority, frankly. I, I know it's no secret that we are stretched very thin. Most shifts, we start with five or four and a supervisor, but very often, we're down to three and a supervisor, which is very thin. The chief does a great job managing his overtime budget. We give him a budget, and he manages to it, and he never exceeds it. The problem is, in order to do that, there's a lot of times when we have less than adequate resources out there on the road. Now, that's always a bit of a risk, and we've been fortunate, but it is a risk. For community our size, with a call volume our size, and with a stadium in Patriot Place, makes us totally unique. There isn't another town really like us at all. We need more police officers, plain and simple. I know the board's aware that there are nights, particularly Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sundays, when it is the case that we are sending all of our resources up to Patriot Place. And that is because the detail offices can arrest, but they can't transport. And so we then outstrip our transportability that we've got up there, the transport truck. But there's times when we have multiple arrests and we'll have to send cruises, and that means that assets for the rest of the community are up there. And it's a period of times when coverage is not adequate here. I'm being a little retro, a little evasive because I don't want to get into it in too much detail publicly, but suffice to say, there, there is a clear and obvious need for additional police resources. I'm desperately trying to do that in the context of a budget that's already very, very tight, as you know, and I'm hopeful that we can make some interroads this year. We did one new officer last year, as you're aware. We did one new the year before. I'm hoping to do two new officers this year, and that's my number one priority, and I hope that meets with the board's, with the board's expectations. The other things, clerical assistance, laborers in the DPW, those are all, possibility of a social worker. Those are all things where there's a clear need, but they have to take second priority to, to police officers, as far as I'm concerned. So again, I think those are priorities, but we're not going to do all that. I can tell you that for sure. There's no way.
Kevin, will you be looking at, you know, other similar venues, like, for example, Legacy Place, and how they manage?
Yep.
Staffing?
Already, already been there, already looked at it. And they have a pretty robust capability there. No doubt about it. They have a very robust capability. I, so yes, we've looked at it.
As, as you're looking at it, you know what I'm talking about.
I personally took a look, yep.
Kevin, you mentioned one of the positions is?
Yeah.
I know Vicky Lowe, as far as back as at least four years, has been looking for some assistance at the senior center.
Yeah.
Is this the same position?
Yes.
It is.
It's fascinating because I've not worked in a community where, that ran a social services department. That's unusual. But primarily because of some unusual housing that we have in Foxborough, which is not common, a lot of that is the motels and hotels up on Route One. We have a population which is greatly in need, which is disproportionate. Communities of our size typically don't have that and don't see it. That's a par, partial contributing factor, but it's not the whole story. So the community, a long time ago, understood that need and established a social service capability paired along with the Council on Aging. And Vicky actually runs both capabilities. And Vicky actually has a stronger capability in social services than senior services, although now she's pretty much considered, you know, one of the best at both, having been the COA Director of the Year last year. But Vicky has indicated, and it's, and it's ironic because the identification of a real need didn't just come from Vicky saying it. Of course, she has been saying it. But the board talked about succession planning as one of your goals. And when I sat down and dialogued with all the department heads about succession planning, Vicky very quickly identified the fact that, you know, there, there isn't a capability there and is a real need. So we sort of said, well, I can't say exactly when budget resources will allow it, but I certainly concur, it's something that's needed, and I, some of you have spoken to me as well. So it's, it's a, it's an area that we're going to have to make some improvement in. If we can't do it next year, I, I would anticipate in the next year or two, hopefully, we'll make a move. But definitely got to be a priority.
Did we, did Tom Leeding approve an assistant for Randy Scollins last year?
Yeah, budget analyst.
And was that, was that filled?
It hasn't. We've done two advertisements. The first advertisement did not yield the candidate that we were comfortable putting in the position. Advertized it again, and we're actually right in the middle of taking resumes right now and doing interviews. So I'm hoping to have it filled rough and tough around the first of the year, mid-January.
Okay, so that's not part of the few new employees that's?
No.
Considered an old employee?
Yep.
Just the DPW, we're looking for how many positions there?
Well, what am I looking for? What's the director looking for? I think the director's probably looking for two or three laborers. He's looking for the low-cost, beginning DPW positions where, you know, they're, they're no, they don't cost, they're, they're not a really, really expensive position, but these are your new, young folks that are kind of groomed for the future to move up the ladder, and folks that can do a lot of good, good, hard work. So, you know, I agree with Roger. The town in the past hasn't had laborers. We've had pretty much nothing but light equipment operators on up, and we haven't had those young, good, strong backs, you know, to do a lot of the manual work that every DPW has to do. So last year, we, we hired one. And, you know, the hope is that we can get a few more, but it's subject to budget constraints. And, you know, I don't know how much we can do, but, you know, hopefully, we can do something. We'll see. We're also looking at some efficiencies by bringing the DPW together. And if we can create those efficiencies, then we may have less need to do that if we're able to move people around a little more liberally than we can do right now.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just going back to, you know, the whole plan that we were, you know, was introduced to us and?
Yeah.
The one that's on the warrant article, voting on in the eleventh? Is that, that's what this comes, is putting the DPW together?
Right, and we, yes. And we kind of bought into that over two years ago now, that, you know, it's going to be across savings too, so.
What we have already is a consequence of that. We've already cut one and a half full-time positions.
Well, that's what I'm saying, Kevin, is you're, you know, it's, it's hard for me to understand we're cutting this, but then we want three more positions, and maybe that's just me.
We also hired another position.
So that makes that, and that, and what, that evens things out, Mark, or?
No, it basically, no. It, that wasn't, that position wasn't supposed to really take an effect, and then it did. So I think that's why the laborers got squashed a year back. So, you know, like you said, I think the board gave Kevin the direction of public safety. If I'm incorrect, tell me, that public safety was our major concern right now. I think that's what we are told, Kevin. And it, you know, and it's still my major concern.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, public safety on this side, but taking the water, the sewer, the roads, tree and park, putting them together under DPW, it was under the auspices that we were going to get more efficiency, whether it's?
Right.
Less people or more efficiency by doing more things with the same amount of people.
And I agree, but I think it, you, I think you're starting to see that now. I think by getting it all together and the work in progress, now it's in a position where I think the next fiscal year, you're really going to see that efficiency. It, you know, it's like merging two companies. You're not going to get it to all the cogs and gears to mesh, and so it's still to be seen, but I'm very hopeful that it will be, you know?
Just a, there ought a quick question. I see the ad com. Who's the liaison for the DPW, you know?
Jeff Anderson.
Jeff Anderson? So he'll be sitting with, because now it's in this, what, the second, going on the third year? So that should be, should be showing up in the books now with the department together with all the staff and the line items and compare? with the department together with all the staff and the line items, and compare that to what it was two-plus years ago? So there's more of, I guess, the checks and balances to see where, where the efficiency is. But what, I think what would not be in that spreadsheet is what there, you'll see the cost and the staff and the expenses on the equipment, but you won't see the productivity. So if they're doing two and three times as much work with the same amount of people, you won't see that. So that's probably the dialogue that you'll have with, with them. All right, any other discussion? Just, I know this is a little off the topic, but it's still the fiscal year '14. When we met with the school committee last week, we were talking about having another one of those weekend, Saturday, whatever day it's gonna be, but we had it on a Saturday in the past, to put the question out there, where are we going with budgets and level spend and level service, the same thing. I think that was a great exercise. Anyone remember when we did it last year?
We haven't done it since I've been here, so it's been over two years.
Yeah, it was the spring, it was the fall.
I think it was, I think it was right around this time. I think we were selling Christmas trees with the scouts, and you guys were having your meeting. I think Larry was involved with that.
Larry, yeah, so it was probably right before you came.
Right.
But I, I thought that was terrific, you know, once we got through the posturing of, you know, budgets first, putting names and faces to it, it was a little touchy at the beginning. But I thought we got some good input from the advisory committee, from the school department, and from the selectmen.
Yep, and then.
I'd love to have that again in the spring, if we could do that.
What month do you think it'd be, we're gonna do something like this?
I would say right.
February would be a good month, yeah. What do you think, February?
I was thinking we did it right after the, not to say the elections, but right after the May, and we got through that. There was, I thought there was a benefit for doing it at that time.
Well, definitely give you a benefit. Because things can change, won't stay the same. So, yeah, I didn't think about the election season either, so.
I think it was a fresh start of that, not the fiscal year, but at least the, call it the political year or something. We could put everything together and have that discussion.
I thought we had done it in March, did we do it in March?
I thought it was before, you guys.
In March?
It was before.
Because we were talking about that preparation, that budget that was actually being prepared at that time. It was the final coming together of what the, before the numbers were gonna be.
You sell Christmas trees in March?
No, it must be, it must've been like.
It was a car wash, it could've been a car wash.
Could've been a car wash, it's exactly.
It was probably a car wash.
I spend way too much time out, out there, as much as I do in here, but.
But they are selling Christmas trees right now, so make sure you come up and get your trees.
It's kind of a.
I know.
What do they call it?
So, yeah, I think we should do it. Maybe talk to the advisory committee and find out what they think is best, but.
I assume you'd be receptive for that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
More, more than receptive?
Right, because.
I'm a little forward to it.
Right, by then, we'll have more definite revenue figures. We have more definite revenue figures by then.
Yeah, you don't get House One local aid proposal till February 1st, rough and tough. That usually sets the floor. We get at least that, we don't, I don't ever remember getting cut below House One. So anytime after House One, the last big component generally comes in on the budget. So after that, we usually have a good, clear story to tell the public. Anytime after that should be good.
All right, so we'll pencil it in and shoot for that time. Okay, anything else on the regular agenda, we'll go into some action items? First one is the meeting minutes from November 13th.
I move that we accept them, meeting the minutes from November 13th.
Second.
More discussions or comments? All those in favor? Motion carries to accept the 13th. And the 20th?
I move that we accept the minutes from November 20th.
Second.
I'm assuming you're all reading these, right?
Yes. That's why I feel confident saying that.
I didn't see anything, but I said it can't be just me.
I can, you can read them all you want, but it's usually Lynda and Lorraine that find.
No, it was just on page six, it said, Miss Brew fees, and I think it should be fails.
Yeah, that's, I did see that, but, yeah.
I didn't catch that.
Motion, was there a motion made?
I thought you were paying, you were taking money.
I was imagining.
Motion made, seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Lorraine, all those in favor?
Right.
And we also have. Renewal appointment for a three-year term expiring on December 14th of 2015 for John Hazeldin and Rosemary Smith for the appointment for the agricultural commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for the discussion?
Appreciation.
With tremendous appreciation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Request for one day all alcohol licenses for possible Patriots games in 2013. And that's the Fred Smurlus first in goal application.
And that's not.
Not said.
These are held in the office until we know if there is gonna be one or more home games. But we know right now there's gonna be a playoff. We don't know yet if it's gonna be here or not.
So we can approve it and hold?
Right.
Well, it's my understanding that there will be, because they won the division, so they would host a wild card game.
Yeah, you know what, you're right.
Yeah, they, they, there's four, four winners of the division, two get the bye.
That's right.
Two get the home wild card game, so no matter what, we're getting one.
Right, we're getting one home game at least, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know football.
There'll be one.
And we know Houston is gonna lose, so.
Okay, so we don't talk about this anymore, I'm telling you right now. If you go back to some of these meetings in late December.
It's gonna be such a short meeting, we gotta talk about something.
I, I can give you tons of subjects.
Talk about that shirt you're wearing. Motion made?
Second.
You'll vindicate it from the early one. More discussion, all those in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Wow. It gets better, we're gonna pick on you and your tie next, Kevin.
We get hit with a pink tie comment, so.
I just did.
This is a request for an 11:00 AM opening on Saturdays and Sundays in 2013 from Anastasia Tumbanos, that's the Lakeview Pavilion.
This is what we do every year for them because of their situation. So I move that we approve the request for 11:00 AM openings, Saturdays and Sundays for the year 2013, to Lakeview Pavilion.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, and the last action item. We received a letter from the Walpole Board of Selectmen, if you've read it. It's a request for us to send a letter to our legislative delegation seeking support to pass legislation that would delay the effect date of the question three, which we all know as the medical marijuana law. Basically, what Walpole is saying in the letter is they do not have time to look at it from a perspective of addressing it per zoning, when these stores come in, where they're gonna be located, how is it gonna be controlled? So they're asking us to support it by sending a letter to the state. Discussion on that?
It's not like putting a cop before the, I mean, that's my thing, and I just, I don't get it. I mean, I totally understand, I don't need a big, you know, I do understand it. What I'm saying is, is that it's almost like you're putting the cop before the horse. And, you know, isn't it something that D B A, I mean, the plan of what would be, looking at zoning changes?
I think, and not to be critical of anyone, but I think there's some concern about control of marijuana use and who would be at these clinics and things like that. And I'm not sure that's really founded, because the Department of Public Health is putting out some stringent regulations about this, obviously. And in other states where it's allowed, you know, it's very tightly controlled for obvious reasons. So I'm not exactly sure what the fear is here. And so I, I would honestly recommend to you that unless somebody can articulate something specific, I think sending a letter and just sort of carte blanche saying, "Don't implement it," against the overwhelming will of the voters, is not, it's, it's kind of flying in the face of the voters. It's just not right.
Yeah, and I know, in our town, it won by 2,000 votes, so.
And by the way, I don't think the legislature has any intention of delaying this, other than to get regulations promulgated concerning the regulation. But I, I agree with you, I don't know what the issue was.
I don't think we should, yeah, unless they.
We're only talking, I think, six clinics statewide.
Right.
And so it's not like there's gonna be a clinic at the 7-Eleven and one up the, you know, we'd be lucky if there's one in the region, you know.
Right.
It's just, they're not gonna be, they're going to be very isolated, strictly controlled in appropriate locations.
Yeah.
I don't believe we can zone, I don't think you can effectively zone. Six.
So there you go, there's gonna be one each county, you're not allowed six.
There's six districts and there's six clinics, and that's it. And I don't, I don't think you can, I don't think you can zone this anyways.
Well, why don't we do this, because it is, I, I agree with you, Linda, it's a state.
Yeah.
This, this people spoke from the state. What we can do is take this letter, and it wasn't copied to the planning board, but the zoning is where the living document is that changes. Similar to an adult entertainment district, if it's not zoned, they can go anywhere.
Right.
So let the planning board tackle this, look at our zoning, and see where it can and can't go, and if they want to address it that way.
Is that what the request is for, though, is to give towns the time to take a look at the zoning and go through that process before this goes into effect, so that you have in place what you want or need? So, I mean, that's one reason why I thought it was kind of a good idea.
They're not gonna, they're not going to put it into effect until the state, until there's regulations, DPH regulations, that's, you know. And that's going to take some time. So it's not, it's not the case, the law passed, and so next week, you know, there's gonna be six marijuana clinics opened up. It's not gonna happen that way. So there's going to be probably a substantial amount of time for cities and towns to deliberate on, do they want to have zoning? But since we've never had this before, there's gonna have to be a lot of work done, you know, about zoning, constitutional rights, and things like that. So, you know, I'm not exactly sure what's even being asked for, other than the obvious, which is this has gotta be thought out, which the legislature's already doing.
Well, it's, you know, I agree with Kevin, I agree with Linda. Does anybody disagree with us?
Well, I'm just wondering, is the DPH looking for input from the tenants? I mean, if they haven't set up their regulations yet.
They haven't even set up a committee yet to talk about it.
I think they asked, I think they were looking for it when they said, "Pull the lever," the lever's pulled. But I think it's a good idea for the planning board just to kind of think about it, and look at our zoning.
All right, so no movement?
So there's no.
Nothing, all right, good.
We have a few minutes, we're gonna go into executive session, but in the informational packet, there was January 8th, we have the Waxy, Waxy O'Connor's hearing that was postponed till the 8th. And there was letters sent out for the Blue Book CBS and Fox from Mandarin on their violations. And also, there was the Nippon City Reservoir. There was an extension for the review process for that last phase, so that's in our packet as well.
By the way, Ginny brought to my attention, Waxy's letter had a typo in it, 2012 instead of 2013. We took care of that today by calling council, noting the date change, and logging it into the file so that it's recorded that we did bring that to their attention. They're obviously aware that it was a typo, but we took, documented it.
Okay, next thing on our. Move the agenda?
Executive session for our contract.
I move that we adjourn to executive session for non-union personnel negotiations, not return to open session other than to adjourn.
Motion made, seconded?
Second.
And just quick discussion, I did promise, Ginny had asked me to talk about open session for the office hours that you guys are having. Do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Oh, just to remind everyone that we have selectmen's office hours the first Tuesday of every month. The 10 to noon is the morning session here, and is it 5 to 6:30?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a nice time.
I blew it, so, I don't know if anybody came in tonight, but.
And what it is, is just an opportunity for anyone to come down to Town Hall if they have something they want to discuss with the selectmen. Just an opportunity for one-on-one, so.
You know what, if, I think we said we were gonna try that, see how it worked out. I think we've had a total of three people. I've had one.
I've had.
I had two.
Two.
No, the first, the first, the first day was.
I would think it's time to, unfortunately, I thought, I thought it would be a great idea, and people would be more responsive, but obviously, it hasn't worked out. So if people want to request by going to the office, say, you know what, I really would like to speak with the selectmen. Make an appointment, that way, we're not sitting here, because we all got things to do too. You know, and it's not piano or soccer, basketball, whatever. I'd rather be at that than sitting here and looking at nothing. And so, but I thought it would be a way better response to it, and it, it hasn't been. We got the same old, same olds, so. I think it's time to move on from that, and if the people from Foxborough want to come in, notify which selectmen you'd like to talk to, through Sandra or by email. It's all on the website, and we can make, you know, an appointment to do that.
You guys all okay with that, makes sense?
Sure.
So a motion was made to go into executive session and seconded for the discussion? Linda?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And I will also say yes. All right, good evening, thank you, everybody. On the record, the shortest meeting.
Excellent.
Anyone can remember? It was probably 20 minutes too long.
Spend the time signing.
Yeah.
What are they doing?
Those are already signed.
Extraordinary well, I mean, that's, no one's reading it. It's very, it's good. You guys signed all of these?
Yeah, that's what we were doing earlier. Does Jim sign this one, or? Oh, yeah, that's over here, yeah.
So I, I sign here?
Okay.